Hello, welcome to the August 26, 2025, Howden Board of Education Business Meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. You stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Clemens here, Vice President Valentine here, Justice McNaul.
Here.
Justice Cooper here, Justice Clemenson.
Here.
We're going to start today's meeting with a moment of silence to recognize and honor the life of Sharon, of Sheriff Evan McConville, who passed away on August 22. His life was connected to and touched the village in a number of different ways. He was a 1975 Howden graduate. He's the father of our middle school teacher, Ryan McConville, the grandfather of some current Howden students. And as Ezra pointed out earlier today, was really instrumental in the support for identifying the need and the value of a school resource officer, which has been really valuable to the district. So we'll take a moment. Thank you. So I believe we don't have any updates or changes to the agenda, so maybe have a reservation with Kibbutz.
It resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as written.
Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so after a relatively slow summer for the board, certainly not for the district, but after a relatively slow meeting schedule for the board, we'll actually be meeting again next Tuesday here in the middle school library, high school library at 7:00 PM for our September business meeting. I really think the only other comments that I have are sort of building on that theme. The summer can be a time of rest and relaxation or slowing down for some people, but for a lot of people in the district, it's really not. We know Dr. Duffy has been really very busy. We know that Catherine, our business official, has been super busy with the audit. And importantly, all of the maintenance and facility staff who always work so hard and do so much, both with the regular staff and folks that join us for the summer. And tomorrow, things really start to get underway, so back into the swing of things. Have Dr. Duffy?
Are we doing the hearings first?
Yeah, we should do the hearings first.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Public hearing, sorry. Thanks. I'm used to moving directly to you. So, so yes, so we have, as required, we have, are going to have a brief public hearing on the Howden Central School District Safety and Emergency Management Plan for the 2025-2026 school year. And give anybody and everybody a chance to ask questions or make comments about those plans. So I am opening the public hearing. Right. Don't cut anybody off. Alright, and so now, the public hearing is now concluded. Thanks to everybody who worked so hard on all those plans and all the work to keep everybody at the district safe and secure. So now, okay.
So as we kicked off the board meeting tonight, we know this is a very exciting time in Howden. We've had a lot of wonderful events taking place, especially the past two weeks of school or two weeks of the summer. I'm already in school mode. So we've hosted student orientations for pre-K, which is a brand new program that we're bringing to Howden this year, our kindergarten, our sixth grade. High school was today. It was a wonderful program. And then our new Students K5 as well. So all of the orientations were very welcoming. Students got a chance to go visit in classrooms, meet with some staff, get a tour of the building. And then parents also were able to engage and take some tours as well. So I had the chance to actually introduce myself to some families, which was really nice to have that opportunity. I also, this week, sports for the fall officially kicked off. And so Tom took me down to visit football. I saw tennis, cross-country volleyball, and soccer. And so it was really fun to see students back doing their thing, whether they are running, whether they're on the field, doing warm-ups. You could feel the spirit in the air. And we have games as early as next week, which is very exciting. We knew teacher orientation last week, so we are bringing in, I think, a total of six new staff, including administrators. So Josh led that. It was a two-full-day experience. And we had a bus tour led by our one and only wonderful high school principal, where we got all things Howden and just a lot of background and history. And that was really well attended and just a nice way even for me as a new superintendent to get to know the community and see where our students look. So I think that was really important for everybody. Tomorrow was the kickoff of Conference Day, so I'm really looking forward to welcoming back our staff. And that starts at 8:30 on Wednesday morning. We also have a second day, so a second conference day on Thursday, where teachers will be engaged in kind of setting up their classrooms and then a learning session on Howden Essentials and Connections to Portrait of a Graduate. So looking forward to that. And then the buildings look amazing, so just a shout out to Adam and his team. I did a walk-through in each building to just get a sense of what, where we are, what's maybe missing, what else might we need. And the buildings are ready to go and opening for our first day of school on September 2. So it's been a great and fun, busy couple of weeks, but I'm ready for the kids and staff to come. So looking forward to the opening of school year starting tomorrow.
Right, thank you. So there aren't any special presentations tonight. And so the next thing on our agenda is the opportunity for communication from the public related to agenda items. So the Howden Board of Education, desires and values input from the entire school community. This first public comment session is reserved for comments on any special presentations or active agenda items. For those who wish to address the board, we'd ask you to sign in and state your name for the record, to keep your remarks to three minutes or less, and to avoid disparaging remarks and discussion of district personnel. Although the board would not engage in dialogue, we'd want you to know that we're listening and we'd ask you to leave contact information with our district for prompt follow-up from the superintendent. So next on the agenda are our information reports that we'll actually be acting on at our next meeting, which is, I assume, yeah, on September 2. And next, we have on the agenda, agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please? These are for the two meetings we've had recently. Oh, actually, one, that's including the reorienting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is the consent data financial. May we have a motion, please?
Second.
There are a couple of things. I think I'll bring one thing up and maybe Dr. Duffy wants to know the other. So recent additions are two grants. One from the Howden Blue Devil Booster Club for a football sled. And the other is the acceptance of a grant from the Howden Devil. Oh, sorry, the first was Howden Devil Booster Club. I guess they're both the booster club. One is for the sled and one is for a soccer team. So that's great. Can we really appreciate their contributions and supporting sports? Is there something you wanted to know?
I just want to add on that sled.
Yes.
I know a bunch of the money is going to get reimbursed by the football club. It's not only the boosters.
Okay.
It's $3,300 that the boosters is putting forward for it, but then a good deal of money will also be coming from the football club group itself.
Okay, great. Yeah, good. And it's great. That's actually really the intended flow, right? That the booster club is really working. That's really what we want to see happening. The booster club working with the separate clubs as well. So that's a great, that's great to know. That's how that's happening.
And the other agenda item is number 10 there. So exciting to note that we have a student coming from Waffengers to our self-contained 12-1-2 program at the elementary school. So that's exciting to see that program expand and have students from outside Howden join us.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Right, next consent agenda personnel. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
If there's anything to be, necessarily.
I could take a quick moment just to recognize Adam McNeil. Absolutely. So he's been our Director of Facilities and Transportation for the past two years. And it's bittersweet that he's moving on to another district, but I do want to take a moment just to thank him for all the work that he's done the past two years. And he's really leading us and putting us in a good shape for the next person coming in. So we have some entry or exit plan meetings that have been scheduled. And he's putting together a nice format for us to see where the work is and where we need to go moving forward.
I'm going to do the motion, right, guys? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So next, moving on to new business, please have this BFE recommendations. Will we have the recommended actions, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next on the agenda is the approval of the Howden Central School District Safety and Emergency Management Plan, for which we held the public hearing at the beginning of the meeting. May we have a motion, please? Oh, no, sorry. We have the recommended action.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Howden Central School District Safety and Emergency Management Plan for 2025-2026.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next is the approval of the Howden Central School District Building Level School Emergency Response Plans for the 2025 school year. The recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Howden Central School District Building Level School Emergency Response Plans for 2025-2026.
May we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approvals of important plans for the 25-26 school year. So next, we have the approval of the K-12 Guidance Plan for the school year. Recommend action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the PK-12 Guidance Plan for the 2025-2026 school year.
An important distinction. PK-12, not K-12. That's going to take some getting used to. May we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, the authorization to review, renew the committee charges, the board and district committee charges for the 25-26 school year.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby reauthorizes the committee charges as presented for 2025-2026.
May we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, boy, really, the school year getting started. Appointment of the board member representatives to the Howden Audit Committee for the 25-26 school year. May we have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Peggy Clemens and Michelle Cooper to serve on the Howden Audit Committee for 2025-2026.
May we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Actually, I have a quick, Catherine, I know you put out a call for additional committee members. Did we get any?
Thomas Pearson.
Until Thomas is the new, okay, because it was my first time. Great. Well, thanks very much to Thomas Pearson for joining the committee. Thanks very much to the committee members who served in the past. And thanks Carol Powell's been a committee member for a long time. And we really appreciate having their expertise on this committee. It's very important. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, the approval of a memorandum of understanding with Duchess Community College for college credit courses for the 25-26 school year. May we have the recommended action?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the memorandum of understanding with Duchess Community College for college credit courses for the 2025-2026 school year and authorizes the superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May we have a, may we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Julia, I could have reached out to ask this to you, but since you're here. So are these students, are these are DCC student classes that are taught by our faculty? And do they follow the curricula sort of pretty standard? So I don't think, some people know there's not many, but I've been taking some classes at DCC. And I just want to say, they're not easy. I worked very hard and so, and it's been really lovely, honestly, as a member of the board and as a person interested in education, to be a part of these classes, to see who's in the classes with me and to have, to learn a lot. But to really, not just on an ideological level, but on a real personal level, to really recognize what tremendous institution DCC is, all the different kinds of people that it serves. And it's, I mean, I know we feel that way about all the colleges that we work with, but DCC is really close to home, right? I mean, it's, it's our local institution. And so this is, this is, this is great. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. The next is discussion of the superintendent's evaluation process. So actually, a while ago, Dr. Duffy and I met to talk about the process. I really left it up to her. I sort of explained what we had done in years past. Left it up to her to identify whether there were any kinds of changes that she wanted to make in developing Dr. Duffy's contract. We'd already made one change, which was to kind of move back the date by which we needed to finish her evaluation by a couple of weeks because the end of the school year is so busy. But other than that, the process is going to be pretty much, you know, pretty much the same. Using the same form, the same, the document that's attached is our timeline. And, you know, which gives, you know, the opportunity for the board and Dr. Duffy to meet on a more informal basis in the middle of the year for people who aren't familiar with it. Talking both about the goals as well as the practices and standards that are part of the New York State School Board Association's Superintendent Evaluation Tool, which has really served us very well for a long time. And then the opportunity for a more formal process at the end of the year, where Dr. Duffy engages in a pretty intensive sort of self-evaluation process, sort of sharing information with the board about what she's accomplished. And then the board having the opportunity to meet on our own and then to meet with Dr. Duffy, so that we have a formal evaluation process completed by the end of the school year.
Great.
So, yeah, and already it's clear that Dr. Duffy's keeping in mind, you know, all of this. We really appreciate it.
I, there, there has been a habitual sort of conversation that we have about the standards because they're, you don't know, there are five standards and we're, we'll make some judgments based on all those standards. And I still, I continue to be, you know, curious about standard one and the ability to which we can oversee some things that are in this one to us.
Right, yeah.
As we approach the time at which we do that mid-year evaluation, I think it'd be good to kind of review standard one because a lot of that is about understanding the degree to which you're providing leadership to, to the teachers in a way, in a curricular way, that's just invisible to us. We're seeing, so.
Oh, that's a good idea. So let's plan to do that, right? So the way that the, for those, most people are unfamiliar, the board gets together and has a conversation. And that's an opportunity as we're leading up to that, to think about that and to even really mid-year to really think about, well, what do we want to see by the end of the year so that the board feels better informed and so that we can collaboratively discuss that? So this was actually what I wanted, but I didn't. So, oh, one more thing. So this needs to be filed with the district clerk by September 1st. So what I'll do, Megan, is I will share this link with you and I'll just write an email that'll be the formal statement that the superintendent and the board have made this decision because it's, it needs to happen by September 1st. Okay?
Okay.
Next is first, just to look through, let the public know and let ourselves know what the workshop topic meeting is going to be. Do you want to, sure?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we're going to kick off September 2nd as a business meeting, but I'll also be sharing a draft of the district goals for the board's review. Then workshop topics, September 16th, we'll have an update about our capital project and also our STEAM programming planning. The STEAM is a continuation from the work from last year. So that'll be a presentation to kind of give the board and the community the sense of what we accomplished last year and then plans for this coming year as it relates to the capital project. We also will have October 21st, we'll have our financial audit presentation and also our technology detail report. The technology detail report will be similar to what we've seen when we do the reports for each school. I don't know if the board and Howden have had a technology detail report in the past. Leah Horn is now officially our Director of Technology, so we're going to have her do something similar that we've had each of the building principals do. So that's taking place on the 21st of October. November 4th is our fifth grade transition to middle school. I know that this has been a, quite a topic for many years. And so we're looking forward to finishing the work this year and actually making that a goal come true in a year from now. But we'll hear from our middle school principal and plans as far as that goes on November 4th. December 2nd will be the transportation audit presentation. And then January 20th, we'll start with our different department and school level reports. So curriculum and instruction and state assessments. February 24th will be elementary visit summary and detail report. Then we'll have middle school March 17th, high school April 21st, as well as athletics. And then May 19th is a special education update. And I also wanted to just do an overview of my entry plan summary, highlights for the year, and perhaps sharing thoughts moving on to 25-26. And then we'll end the year in June 16th with a STEAM curriculum update again. So those are the draft list of workshop topics at this time.
So it has been a long time since we've had a report about how technology is being used in the district. And I, I'm pretty confident it hasn't happened since COVID. And I think with the, I mean, just generally with how society is moving as well as the use of devices so heavily throughout COVID, it's my perception, at least, I could be wrong, there was some expansion of the one-to-one program during that time. And I think the board, I want to make sure that Leah has the chance to be the best prepared for the kinds of questions that the board is going to have. Because I think, not surprisingly, it is an issue I think that people are really excited about, right? There's a lot of affordances that technology can bring to us. But I think, you know, as evidenced by, for example, the cell phone ban, there are concerns about technology as well. And so maybe what the board, I just, we have a little bit of time. Why don't you think a little bit about what you might think might be a good way? Right, so I don't, I don't want to overwhelm her with too many questions. I think there's probably a lot of questions and we want to prioritize them. But I do want to give her the opportunity to be the best prepared to address an important topic, so that, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Think about that. And then.
And I would just offer and add, if there's any burning questions that any board member has, so that would be helpful to know ahead.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean. So, yeah, so, and, and so it's sort of communicating that with her. But yeah, for the, right now, I think if people do have burning questions, going ahead and emailing them to Dr. Duffy and seeing me would be a good way to start. And then we can move forward from there. So thanks.
Yeah.
And I appreciate, I mean, Leah's an old hat. And we're seeing technology in the district, so it's not like we're putting her on the spot for first month. But it is, you know, it is early in the school year, so I think that's.
I have a, I have a quick question about, because we're not accustomed to thinking if pre-K is part of our elementary school program. I would assume that when Christine comes and gives the elementary visit summary, that will include pre-K at that time?
Yes, so we'll add that, we'll modify that so it says pre-K. Yeah, so pre-K 5, yeah.
Okay, that, I wasn't sure.
Thank you.
No, it is a.
It's a reminder, yeah.
It's a reminder, right? We've been K-12 and now we're pre-K-12. So, yeah, that's a lot, a lot of excitement.
And even though, so September 16th is a special CS Arch Capital Project update, but we'll be getting the updates throughout. Yes, yes. I'll include them in the weekly updates. And actually, tomorrow, as part of the opening of Conference Day, I'll be sharing some updated slides with the faculty and staff that were presented to the board back in the spring. But I don't know how often our faculty and staff are looking at board meetings and presentations. So I will make sure that they're familiar with the work and kind of the plan moving forward for this school year. And then the hope is that we will have frequent, multiple, smaller updates about the entire school year to the school community, but then also the community at large about capital project. Because there's been a lot that's happened behind the scenes since it's been voter-approved in November. But if you're not on a committee, you might not, and if you don't see ground broken yet, you're not maybe quite sure what's going on, so.
I feel like we've had a conversation, but I don't remember what the outcome was about how, so that September 16th meeting, that's an important meeting. A lot of people haven't seen, like, they're going to see some new things, new plans for the high school week, really exciting things that people haven't had.
Which we did in April, too.
Did, do, but it hasn't, is that, okay, we did in April, too. Well, I guess here's my question. I think even just an email, do we want to do an email to parents, just letting them know that there's going to be another presentation? I don't know. I'll leave it up to you all to think about.
But I'm also, I forgot to mention Curriculum Night, so we will have Megan talking on the map.
We'll see that.
Updated display boards. And I'll be at every Curriculum Night, kind of standing with the board to introduce myself and then answer any questions that people might have.
But I think that, I don't think that's a bad idea as we sort of frame out what, what new information is going to be shared on the 16th, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Or if, it's, if we can't do it before, it's always after the meeting we can side-by-side comparison.
And just encourage people to be looking for all of those updates as they come along, which will happen a lot more frequently this year.
Alright, so now we're at the second opportunity for communication from the public. So it's this is an opportunity for anybody attending the meeting, if you have comments to make to the board on any school district matters. So any reflections from board members? Oh, do, what? Do you have, did you have a comment? Yeah?
Well, I don't know. It is not, I'm very guy.
Oh, so what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to do a couple of things. I'm gonna ask you to sign in. Sorry, you missed, I do a long spiel about comments. So I'm asking you to sign in, if you don't mind. And then if you would, just so that, we're, because we're recording the meeting, if you wouldn't mind standing at the podium to make your comments. Do you mind standing up here?
Yes, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
I haven't done this in a while. Hi, I'm running, my wife, Chris. We work here, well, at the. We've worked here, well, at the, I've built, actually worked for both of them, as in before here. And so I said about the morning. My question lies to two things, basically. One, we've been basically serving the kids not too healthy snacks, but bringing juice and cookies sometimes, and donuts, and whatever, and they eat them. But now, according to New York State, we're having breakfast and lunch. I know, I, we start seven fifteen, school, don't start, almost school to eight thirty-five, when we're going to start breakfast.
So would this be a cut, so typically, the way the board handles comments is we like to hear questions and comments, but we don't typically engage in dialogue when people come. But we appreciate your question, and I can promise you that Dr. Duffy will be following up with you afterwards, and so are there other concerns that you have about the free lunch meals or any, the free?
No, not, not so much, the next thing is, I think, one of the things, well, basically during October and September, we charge the kids outside, they play kickball, they play kaga ball, they have a good time. However, once, but go into the library. We have sixteen students ranging from the fifth grade down to kindergarten.
Don't look that well.
I didn't bring in, I have, I did myself, bring them in, I let them get on the internet, supervise the games, you know, no black violence and that type of thing. I turn on the computer, show movies, cartoons, sometimes educational. Think I have kind of bored thought, but it's before, before school. They seem to enjoy coming to school. And there are parents that are going to work, yeah, be at work before the doors open. And with providing that care, that's my question. I want to be able to continue with the ideas, I think, yeah, I see.
Oh, I see, oh, good question, right, with the new, yeah, so that's the kind of, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm confident.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
Miss Jamon will be, will be in touch.
That is a question for me.
No, no, but thanks, thanks for coming. Any reflections from board members?
I do, first thing I'll say is that I, I drop my son off every day and a half for the past seven years, and I see both of you every day coming back just as I'm arriving, parking at the end of small lot, and I'm always curious, I was like, I wonder where is the work and how it is that they were here before everybody else? So I'm glad. But every day, I have the same question every day, so I'm so glad to now know that that's what you're doing, and thank you so very much, I should have just asked, but I felt that, this is, I didn't want to say that. Ah, this is either the time of year where I say, you know, I work at a local business and I have the opportunity to employ, you know, folks that have been here at Haldane, and you know, this particular, this last year, we had, you know, some both recent and graduates from several years ago, and multi-generational. And I just wanted to say that we have currently in our employ a graduate that left maybe three years ago, who, who runs our box office. It's a very important job that he, and he does it so incredibly well, he's twenty-one years old, and typically this is a job that, you know, a real adult would perhaps be. And, and Luca, I know if you ever hear about this at so far, but I wanted to say that, you know, it's just, you know, and yeah, an expression of how well, you know, we prepare our kids for the world, that they can step into a job of such considerable responsibility, and you know, manage people that are twice as age with, so, you know, so, so well, so I'm continually impressed by the folks that I have the opportunity to graduate, so I just wanted to say.
And thank you to Julia for organizing the orientation and house was involved in high school orientation. It was student-run, so thank you very much to all the students that attended their time. Though I think they may have been bribed at some level, maybe, but that's small, we don't bribe children, you know. What's the world come to? But a, but a thank you to those kids, and I think, I believe it was well-attended, and the kids were honest, nice opportunity for kids to talk to other kids, which is great, so thank you.
I just want to briefly compliment the work that went into that guidance plan. It is so comprehensive, I remember last year being blown away by it, too, just from the things like Red Ribbon Week and Mental Health Awareness Month, so all the awareness-raising things to just the comprehensive work that goes into all the grade levels, you know, all the school buildings with planning for college and everything, and all the work that goes on outside of the classroom, which is very impressive to read through that again, so thanks to everybody who put in all that work.
Any final thoughts from you?
Looking forward to our opening conference day tomorrow, and welcoming back staff, and welcoming new staff, and the board is invited if your schedules allow, eight thirty to nine fifteen.
Great, thank you. All right, so I move to adjournment meeting, may I have a second, please? All those in favor?